All right, Calvin, go ahead and start taping. It is now 7:36 PM. And call the meeting to order here. Good evening, fellow commissioners and the general public. My name is Mike Champis and I am the Chair of the Transportation Advisory Commission. Before we begin, please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the county website and on YouTube. To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by the new state legislature and FOIA, the Transportation Advisor Commission needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. It is a bit cumbersome, so I ask you in advance for your patience. First, because each member of the commission is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a form of members is participating, that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all of the other members. As said, each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. I'm asking that each commissioner, each commission member participating in this meeting to state your name and location from which you are participating. Why do I mention your name? At large, Linda Spurling.
This is Linda Spurling. I am participating from my home in Seanott Clifton, Virginia.
Okay. Braddock District, Braddock District, Kevin Morse. Special meeting, so attendance is not required, not that it always ever is. Drangel District, myself, I'm here. Hunter Mill District, Kelly Westenhoff.
This is Kelly Westenhoff and I'm here from my home in Reston.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Mason District, Roger Hoskin. Mount Vernon District, Pete Sitnick.
Pete Sitnick, I'm in my residence in the Mount Vernon District.
Thank you, Pete. Lead District, Alexis Glenn.
This is Alexis Glenn from my home in Alexandria.
Okay, Providence District, Jeremy Hancock.
Jeremy Hancock in Foster.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Springfield District, Eric Thiel.
I'm here in Springfield District.
Okay, fantastic. And Sully District, David Skiles. Okay, and Fairfax Area Disability Services Board, Mary Pauline Jones, who she told me she's not here, but just in case she all of a sudden magically got better. Mary Pauline? Nope, she's still, has a sinus headache, okay? At this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to At-Large Commissioner Linda Spurling, so that I might be heard to make the requisite motions.
Thank you. I accept the virtual gavel and I now recognize Commissioner Champis.
Thank you. I move that we have determined that each member's voice can be adequately heard by each other member of the committee, and so moved.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It is seconded by Commissioner Sitnick. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Real quick, you called out Roger's name and he's here, but we didn't hear him.
Well, I'm here in Falls Church.
And now I hear you. Thank you.
All right, fantastic, thank you. All right.
There any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstention? Mr. Chairman, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. I next move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this commission to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting. I further move that this commission may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated audio conversing line and that the public may access this meeting by WebEx online platform or recalling 1-415-655-0001 or 1-844-621-3956 toll-free and entering the access code 129-806-1793. Phone number for ADA is 711. Access information is also available at the TAC website at Fairfax County Transportation TAC meetings. It is so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It sounds like it was seconded by Commissioner Hoskin. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstention? Mr. Chairman, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you. Finally, I move that all of the members on the agenda previously furnished and posted on the TAC website are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of this commission's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. It is so moved.
You have heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it again.
Oh, we had a tie. It sounds like Commissioners Hoskin and Westonhoff.
I'll defer to Commissioner Westonhoff.
Okay.
Thank you, Roger.
Always. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstention? Mr. Chairman, the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now start the tax business per the approved agenda. So moving to the agenda. The Chair's remarks. I really thank commissioners who were able to come here to this special meeting. It was happy to be, to ask by Mr. Masani to have a look at this, this proposal for active Fairfax. I understand they're going to the board here at 25th of May, although if things have changed, they'll certainly let us know. So we needed to be able to talk to them so they could take our comments in a time of passion and we're pleased to be able to do so. At this point, I would like to welcome, if there are any members of the public here, I don't think so. In which case then, what I'll do is turn it over to Chris Wells to introduce the members of the team and to begin the discussion this evening. Chris?
Perfect, thank you. So we were here with the TAC. We thought it was just a few months ago, but I looked at my calendar and it was October.
Oh, my God.
Still a few months ago, but a few more months. So the TAC is certainly aware of the active Fairfax plan and the, the general idea of combining the countywide trails plan and the bicycle master plan, updating and improving those and making some pedestrian policy statements and other policy statements. So Nicole, I'll hand it off to Nicole here in a minute. Nicole Winans is the project manager for Fairfax County Department of Transportation on this project. And Jennifer Baldwin is with Alta Design, our consultant for this project. Alta is one of the national leaders in pedestrian bicycle planning and they've been a great partner. Where we are timeline-wise and some of this might be in a slide, but just briefly, we are funded for Phase One. Phase One is our data gathering, establishing the baseline, so to speak, of multiple things, not just trail data, but you know, policy data, legal data, and then we've conducted outreach for this initial phase, which is really just beginning this conversation. In fact, we, we attended those outreach meetings, community conversations, really to get more input on where folks want us to be. And so the main deliverables that'll end Phase One is what we call our vision and goals, and that's what we're here to present on tonight. The second main deliverable is the systematic safety plan. It was not ready yet tonight, so we hope to take that to the board in June, so we can come back to the TAC in advance of that. And ultimately, all of these things will wrap up July-ish for this fiscal year and Phase One. And then we are looking to how, how we can move parts of Phase Two forward. We're not fully funded for Phase Two. In fact, we're not any funded for Phase Two. But we anticipate asking again for funding at carryover, which is in the fall. So what we're looking to do is to bridge that time with some tasks that we can have the consultant do and keep the process moving forward. So that's basically the backdrop of where we are. Nicole, you want to add any, any other words of wisdom or just hand it straight to Jennifer?
I think we can hand it straight to Jennifer. I just wanted to say, thanks for having us tonight. Always good to be back and we were looking for your feedback, expertise, your local perspective of your districts and your insights on your own experience of being an active transportation, either in the county and working on the planning side of things as well. So I can... Go ahead.
Quickly, just to make sure, I think we sort of do this naturally anyway, and that is we just sort of ask questions as they come up, sort of as a discussion. So that way, you know, we can work through things and, and so, you know, trying to talk with Joe all over each other, like I just did. But that way we can go through, so please commissioners, if you have questions, please feel free to just, just ask them and we'll sort of put this up on the, on the hoist and check it out. And I appreciate that opportunity, so sorry for the interruption.
No, and that's perfect. And I actually forgot to mention one other thing also before we get into this portion. Also, Calvin had forwarded us some concerns that the commissioners had about other issues related to pedestrian and bicycling things. So we, that's why all of, if it was just this tonight, Lauren wouldn't be here, it would probably just be Nicole and maybe not even me. But we're all here tonight, so time permitting, we'll go through the active Fairfax vision and goals portion that we are looking for your official input on. And then we can continue the discussion that's not related to active Fairfax and talk about some of the issues that, in the document that Calvin forwarded to us.
Appreciate that. And there might be some things that help shape our thoughts on, on the active Fairfax plan. And so, yeah, we look forward to, for discussing that. My thought was, we go through the plan that you need our approval on and then sort of look back later and see if there's some things we went missed. And also can certainly trust our commissioners to remember what they asked about and raise it at the appropriate time of the conversation here, so we can do that.
Great, thank you. I think we can, we can get started in the presentation.
Thanks, everyone. I'm Jennifer Baldwin with Alta Planning and Design. I'm really excited to share a little bit more about what we've been up to for active Fairfax and the plan and present those draft vision and goals for your feedback. So, you know, our official agenda, we've split this presentation into four sections. We wanted to give you an update of, you know, for those that may not be as familiar with active Fairfax, why we're doing this, what that process is, and kind of what Chris was, was alluding to, the phased approach to this plan development. So we'll go over that and then we'll jump into, as part of the project, one of the deliverables was to identify some potential benefits of increasing active transportation in Fairfax County. I've got a few sneak peek kind of highlights of our existing condition overview, what we've been learning, trying to understand what walking and biking and taking a scooter in Fairfax County is like. And then we'll dive into all of that, kind of fed into the development of the draft vision, goals, and objectives that we're going to present to you this evening. So from an update perspective, we just wanted to make sure everybody is on the same page. So we have a countywide trails plan, the bicycle master plan, as well as several different active special area plans, mainly within those activity centers across the county. So we have a lot of rich planning, but the need was to really put everything together, so it was under one umbrella document and make sure we're thinking about things comprehensively. And the other element that we wanted to incorporate and look at is taking advantage of that regional trail network. So that Capital Trails Network is looking at this entire regional, it's an aggressive trail plan, which is really exciting for the region. And there's definitely some elements within Fairfax County that is linking into that regional network. And this map just shows the green are the existing trails and then the orange are some of the planned trails to be identified for implementation in the future. So there's a lot of rich planning, but we need to consolidate that into one plan document for Fairfax County. And so some of our specific priorities is to really identify a connected and comfortable network of sidewalks, bikeways, and trails. Really focus on design elements to really help our engineers, you know, facilitate safer pedestrian crossings, facilities, really honing in on the complete street concept and really customizing that for how that can be implemented and promoted within the context of Fairfax County. Looking at potential policy changes, which I know you had some really good recommendations of some, identifying some of those opportunities, as well as looking comprehensively at programs and different initiatives to encourage people to walk and bike more in Fairfax County. And then I think one of the biggest deliverables for Phase Two is thinking of a prioritization process. We know we have a lot of need throughout the county, so how are we going to prioritize investment in the future to make sure that we are promoting projects that, that fit the highest need and demand across the county? So as Chris alluded to, we split the project into phase, into phases. This may have to be split into a third phase, depending on the funding outcome. But in general, Phase One is what we've been working on. And I like to think of that as just really trying to understand the existing context of Fairfax County. So doing a deep dive for a policy and plan audit, really understanding the existing conditions in terms of the existing network, trying to have as robust of an engagement process as we can, given the constraints of COVID. But we're definitely getting a lot of feedback, which I'll share a little bit, and really setting that vision, goals, objectives for the county, so that we can move, you know, have that umbrella vision and goals that Phase Two will, will support with all these different tools of implementation. And then another exciting component that I know many of you have been waiting for, and I'm excited to get your feedback at the next meeting, would be that strategic safety program plan. So identifying some action items, specific action items that the county can take with the support of various partners such as VDOT to really improve safety for our most vulnerable users in the county.
Jennifer, while we're just here, because I know this was on the agenda as a separate item before. So just to be, be sure, the safety program plan is, is not quite ready, I understand. It's not something you're going to bring to the board on the 25th, and I guess that's moved back a little bit, so to speak?
Correct. We just decided, that's a lot to present to the board in the same meeting, because the vision and goals have quite a few slides and then the safety really warrants its own focus. And we're working, we have a working group for the safety program plan recommendations that we're meeting and working with in May. So we just wanted to make sure that, that the recommendations had another internal vetting before they were ready for prime time.
Copy. And I know some of the things that our commissioners have raised are safety kind of issues, so that, that is perfectly so. Just, just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. So then some of the elements, you know, that I mentioned in Phase Two, we'd get into a little bit more of the weeds in terms of really developing that facility selection toolbox. So different typologies of what facility choice may be appropriate for different roadway types. Really diving into the specific network recommendations, focusing on those activity centers, some program recommendations, and trying to provide implementation guidance, so just thinking about design criteria, standards that we may need to improve moving forward. Like I said before, that funding prioritization element. And then a big component is also, you know, part of Phase One is doing this detailed policy audit, but Phase Two is actually going to identify the potential text edits and amendments required within the comp plan to identify those recommendations from active Fairfax. And so the timeline schedule, so Phase One, we're about three quarters of the way done. We hope to, we definitely will be done with Phase One by August of this year, and then we're going to move into Phase Two. You know, and that timeline is, is still a little bit flexible depending on our funding. Specifically, some of our achievements to date, since you've last received your update, as we have finalized that.
Jennifer, can I, can I bump in for a question?
Sure.
Yeah, earlier you talked about working with VDOT. Are you working with the National Park Service also, the reason being I'm Mount Vernon District? And quite frankly, we're doing that safety stuff on the parkway and that should tie into this network nicely? And I just don't know if you guys are talking or not.
Yeah, so there are identified stakeholder specifically for the trail network. I don't believe they're on our safety working group, but we have, you know, definitely had communication with, with them and we'll keep them up to date, especially as we get into Phase Two, when we talk more detail on the network recommendations.
Okay, is it, to hook into their trail going from DC all the way down to Mount Vernon is, is obviously important, so, okay, thank you.
Huge opportunity, yeah.
Jennifer, as I'm looking at this, this slide is not in the briefing slide deck that was presented earlier. So is this just one slide that's been put in, or is there a whole brief that's been put here? Because the next slide I show is share your thoughts.
Yeah, so this slide was added, but that was the presentation that was shared with Calvin. But it may have been the one that's uploaded. This one was added today, sorry about that.
Just this one slide then?
Yeah.
Okay, copy. I'm trying to, thank you.
We just wanted to make sure that you knew some of the specific achievements of the plan, so we thought this was worth going over in detail. Specifically, we finished several different existing condition analysis, which I'll share a summary with you in the next section. And then our engagement plan is underway, and so we've really received great feedback so far. We've gotten over 1,200 different community surveys and we developed the survey in several different languages. So we're seeing some increase in that diversity as well and just a ton of rich comments and feedback. We, we designed the survey to be easy, but then allow folks to just share, you know, what they wanted for our vision, you know, and have a lot of open-ended responses, which while that may take a little bit more analysis on the backend, I'm really excited that we did that, because just looking at those comments, people are really sharing their stories about their struggles with active transportation in Fairfax County and, and their ideas of how they can improve it and what improvements would be needed to encourage them to walk or bike more. So it's definitely a lot of good feedback. The, the engagement, the first phase of this engagement closes on May 15th. And so, you know, as soon as that closes and we pull down all of the information, we will be doing a detailed, you know, deep dive analysis to really identify those themes. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but that's why the draft vision and goals and objectives are just drafted right now, because we want to make sure that we can incorporate what we're hearing from the, from the public into that draft before it's finalized. Another element of engagement besides the survey was we have two interactive maps. That has been a fun tool for folks to, you know, pan around the county, identify, they can zoom right into their neighborhood and give comments on barriers to active transportation or destinations that they either currently or would like to walk or bike to. And then we also put up a separate map that has the, the currently, the existing planned network. Has all the planned trail connections, the planned on-road bikeways from the previous bike plan. And it allows folks to identify missing gaps in that planned network, identify what streets they'd like to see some complete street improvements on. And so while we haven't gotten as much comments, we've still gotten 300 plus comments on that. And again, really rich, detailed feedback, so folks are really taking their time to giving us a really deep dive into their thoughts, which will be super helpful at Phase Two for the network development. We've also completed the benefits of active transportation report, which I'll share with you. We've got this draft vision, goals, and objectives that we've had a lot of really good internal discussion around. And then, like I mentioned before, we're, we're in the process of developing that systematic safety program plan. And so we did just want to give a plug. I hope all of you are aware of our engagement tools, but here's the website that you can go to if you haven't. Please take our survey. I know that Nicole has been meeting with, with you guys one-on-one, but would definitely love your feedback and really appreciate the effort that you all have made to help leverage your communication channels to get us to that 1,200 responses. But, you know, we have about 10 more days. We'd love to get over 2,000. So the more we can do within the remaining time that we have to promote, so that everyone is aware of the opportunity for feedback, the better our analysis will be. I also want to mention, we, you know, we have a depth of virtual tools, but we've also made a concerted effort to think about the folks that may not have access virtually. And so we're, we printed short surveys and Nicole's been coordinating to distribute those at the food distribution centers that were set up because of COVID. So we're getting those out with pre-post stamped envelopes, so it's really simple and easy for them to take the survey and mail it back to the county. And then we've also put everything that you can find online in a printed booklet. And those are going to be available at the recreation centers, so anybody can go up, grab that booklet, take the survey, draw on a map and return that back in case, you know, people want paper copies instead of just, you know, playing around on, on the internet. So we've tried to be creative and think outside the box to kind of counteract the COVID restraints for engagement.
Hey Jennifer, a couple of questions on the map, which I think is really great and cool, you can go in and mark areas. I think that I've had trouble kind of explaining to folks kind of what the map means from like long-term, and you talked about it a little bit. But maybe you could explain a little more about what, what the, how the information on the map will be used.
Sure. Are you speaking about the planned network map or the barriers and destinations?
I guess more on the barriers to destinations.
Yeah, the barriers and destinations is really just a complement to the survey. So people in the survey can share their challenges and the opportunities that they see. But it's, it's a lot easier if you can zoom right into the road and make comments. And we will pour through to really identify per district, some common themes of the barriers in your district. They could be really large crossings, not enough, you know, marked crosswalks, no trail connectivity. You know, those are sample of some of the challenges that we've been seeing so far. And then we'd also be able to identify those top 10 or top 20 destinations within your district that people most want to be able to walk or bike to. So all of that feedback, so we're going to take all the comments, and there's a lot. Like I said, you know, we do a lot of these tools. I'm not sure there's been a tool. People are really taking their time and giving really thoughtful comments behind just placing a point. So it's really going to have a lot of rich feedback for us to sort through and tag and try and, you know, develop a system to identify them into key themes so that we can summarize, not only for each district, but also for the county as a whole.
The survey ends the 15th. Do you plan on keeping those maps open beyond the 15th?
That's a good question. Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we're, we're still going to plan on keeping that open. It's just that we're going to download all the comments and use that 15th as the marker to really identify what folks have told us.
Yeah, I think we should have to talk about it internally. There, there's some financial implications, I guess, to keeping it open, but it's, it's a great tool. It's actually very valuable for SCDOT beyond the active Fairfax planning project. So the, it's very, we have, we have an unfunded list of gaps, of sidewalk gaps and trails. So this is similar information in a geographic format, a crowdsourced and very detailed that we can, you know, fork through, as Jennifer says, from a feature, you know, capital project funding, you know, funding ideas as well. So it's a very, very helpful information to see where all the gaps are from a much larger crowdsourcing effort than our weekly phone calls for, you know, where citizens report gaps and issues. So if you can keep it open, it would be very valuable for us, but that's to be determined at this point.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it would be great to keep it open, just before I turn it over to Pete. The other, the challenge that I've, I've seen in our community is how to explain to folks what active Fairfax is. I think it's still a challenge that we, we have, because I think we've, and it's not, it's not a critique. I think it's just kind of like the situation that we're in, we're trying to collect lots of information. I think, I think strategically much broader than, than what's required to Phase One. But I, it's, it seems, it's been difficult, I think, for folks to understand kind of what the long-term goal is. We have the goal of the map, but we, you know, we have the map, the, the destination map and all those other things and a lot of other tools that are great. But it's been, I don't think, I don't think a lot of folks understand kind of what the long-term vision is, and that's, I think that's part of it. But I would just encourage you to think about how we communicate that out, maybe after, after you set the vision and before the board supervisors to help the community understand kind of where active Fairfax is going in the long term.
Thank you. That's good feedback. We can definitely, you know, think about that more.
So are you expecting the public to actually contribute specific information like trails to nowhere and sidewalks to nowhere and things like that, or do you have a pretty good handle on that?
No, I mean, I think we're, there's a lot of good feedback. The public is telling us that the sidewalk isn't wide enough or, you know, some of the comments I've seen has been as detailed as, you know, a crosswalk is needed on this southern leg of this intersection. And so I do think there's a thwarting that we're going to do to identify all the specific infrastructure recommendations. To the previous point, likely won't influence the vision and goals, but will absolutely feed into the network development and can also be parceled out and given to, you know, DOT, we can, you know, as a separate initiative outside of the plan itself can review and, and, you know, identify some of those more urgent needs that the public's telling us.
Where is the funding going to come from for, not, not your active Fairfax planning project? But if we decide we need to complete trails or we need to complete bike paths or we need to change trough, crosswalks or a sidewalk that goes nowhere to make it go somewhere? Where's the money going to come from? This is beyond the scope of the study.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Let me just go ahead and jump in. It sort of goes to what Jeremy was saying also about folks not necessarily understanding that two different issues that we're all looking at. And I mean, folks often just see the missing sidewalks and say, oh, well, we just need a sidewalk from here to there. Whereas ultimately, the active Fairfax plan is a comprehensive planning effort of the entire network of, of facilities that are graded in sidewalks, typically trails. Uh, typically uh, trails. So um, so it's hard, it, it, it's always hard to keep people focused on that long term um, vision. Uh, when there's so many needs out there, admittedly, you know, immediately, uh, right now, today. So, so that's part of, part of the answer. I, I think the, the real answer about where the funding is going to come from, it's, it's going to come the same way that, that it's always come. Uh, it's going to come through our uh, our transportation funding sources. So our federal, state and, and local funding sources. What the active Fairfax plan is going to do though is to give us tools uh, to help um, uh, make more data driven prioritization of funding such as based on equity and, and network gaps that are not just a sidewalk gap. But you know, uh, uh, a very important gap in the entire overall network that would score higher, so to speak. So we're, we're developing those prioritization tools. But the, the actual source of funding for now would be anticipated to come uh, from our traditional sources. Now, if the board of supervisors were to um, make different funding decisions in the future based on the needs and the, the recommendations of this study and, and where the county is going, which, you know, is definitely, uh, we are definitely a county that is more focused on uh, walking and, and biking. And if, for that matter, also mostly built out our, our vehicle, uh, our automobile network. So um, there, if, if there are additional sources of, of funding in the future uh, to help realize these goals, then the board could certainly uh, make those decisions in the future as well.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay. Any other questions on the project as a whole before I start presenting some of our findings from benefits?
Uh, hey Nicole, it's Kevin Morse, uh, jumping in late here. I was on another Zoom meeting and uh, you may remember I had the opportunity to participate in the celebratic one that you did there a week ago. Um, I just, one thing that kind of stuck in my mind from that one, and I'd maybe you've already heard this tonight, or, or maybe you're going to get to it. But the uh, the scenario where the bicyclist would be in the middle of the road because there's no other place for him to be, so that any vehicles would either have to follow behind him or if there were no oncoming traffic. Pass around him by crossing the yellow lanes. I just wanted to, you know, go on record as I, I found that to be the very least attractive alternative. And that would give me a lot of concern.
Well, thank you for, for sharing that. Um, we, we heard that uh, from, from other community members and also some supervisors, which is the unfortunate reality on many of our um, country roads, particularly the curvy narrow ones that apparently are very popular among cyclists as well because they're country roads, they're scenic and have very low traffic. Um, but you know, legally a cyclist can ride in the road. Um, and there's a legal way for a driver to pass, but it does, may cause a couple of seconds or maybe a minute delay. Um, there's some signage we can provide, but apart from providing an actual separate bike facility, like a bike lane or a shared use path. Um, there's, you know, it's a concern, but we have not really identified that as a crash factor as part of our study. But their, their current bicycle master plan recommends some safety treatments. And I'm sure the uh, the active Fairfax transportation plan will, will continue that theme of, of uh, trying to find solutions for those situations. And more car speeds is also one way of addressing the issue.
Okay. It just quickly to refresh my memory, the, the shareo is the uh, the one where you've got the, the ungraded, the markings on the, on the side of the road. Uh, the bike lane markings on the side, but there's no great separation.
Yeah, the bike lanes, the standard bike lanes, there's no great separation. It's the protected uh, bike lanes or separated bike lanes with cycle tracks. Those are the, those are all the same facility, uh, but that's the virtually um, vertically protected bike facility.
Specifically the one that you, that's called a shareo?
That is just a marking in the lane. It's the bike symbol with the, with the two, uh, the chevron.
Right, okay.
Marking, yeah.
All right, good. Thank you.
Great. So I'm going to move on and just share some of the findings from our benefits assessment. And this is a highlight. So this benefits assessment has a detailed report behind it. Um, and basically what we did is we took the Fairfax County numbers, the existing mode share, um, you know, and compared it to aspirational or peer counties and calculated using an Ulta um, developed model to really try and define an, a potential annual increase. Um, you know, in savings. So if we increased our mode share, which I'll actually share a little bit in a couple slides, what they are today in our existing condition findings. You know, we could see a lot of benefits such as seventeen point eight million dollars in healthcare savings, a reduction of about thirty nine thousand um, metric tons of CO2 emissions and a reduction of thirteen point nine million um, in vehicle crash costs. And so this detailed report is we're really trying to put numbers to what doing nothing may mean for us. And if we can increase active transportation and really think about, you know, developing more of that connected and comfortable network and more people ultimately choose to walk or bike as their form of transportation, um, or even just for recreation. We can see some pretty significant um, annual cost savings. And these numbers, we're using twenty twenty costs um, in order to calculate these potential annual savings. Um, and so overall, all those individual analysis, basically, you know, annually, the additional active trips or reduced vehicular trip could result in over seventy four million dollars of health, environmental and transportation benefits annually. Um, and again, this is using a comparison of peer counties from across the country and their mode share rates. And so we know other counties, um, you know, have higher rates. And so then we just calculated what that could mean in cost savings if um, Fairfax County increased the mode share rates. The other element we looked at in terms of benefits was trail oriented development. And we didn't do, you know, a detailed economic evaluation study for Fairfax County. But there's a lot of really good, rich data available nationally, um, you know, such as the, the study by CEOs for cities, which really identifies that houses located in areas with above average walkability or bikeability are worth, you know, on average about thirty four thousand more than houses in areas with average walkability levels. And so there's been a lot of studies that really, you know, prove that, you know, people really want to, especially after COVID. Um, if you have a house on a trail, it is worth significantly more than if it's not located within that quarter mile of a trail. So we tried to really identify some of the relevant studies and cite them as potential benefits for, for Fairfax County. And then one of the, you know, um, best national case studies is the Indianapolis Cultural Trail. And so there's been a lot of detailed study both before and after, um, of not only their walk rates, but an economic impact of the surrounding businesses. Um, so for folks that don't know, that's an amazing trail connection through downtown Indianapolis. And in two thousand and eight, the detailed economic um, evaluation found that the value of properties within a block of the trail um, increased um, hu- almost a hundred and forty eight percent relative to other parcels. Um, so the value of these parcels located within the block of that trail, you have significant increased value based on the trail's presence. Um, and so that was conducted after detailed before and after studies. So there is a lot of, you know, exciting opportunity, especially the county already has this, this fairly robust trail network. And if we can really hone in on some of those, those missing gaps, like mentioned before, like getting in and out of DC, um, you know, through the county. I think that we could have a ton of benefit um, in, you know, from health benefits and um, specifically the, the property values and economic benefits as well. Is there any questions about that high level benefits? I know I'm kind of preaching to the choir because I know you all know the importance of active transportation. But um, we were developing those, you know, for the general, you know, audience to just help why, why are we doing active Fairfax um, transportation plan? Why it's important and some of the benefits associated with, with highlighting transportation.
Jennifer, this is Linda. I just, that's amazing. Those statistics you just went over regarding home values. That really got my attention and I'm sure that that gets a lot of other people's attention as well.
So thanks. Yeah, there's a lot of studies. So our report cites many more studies than that. Um, so we can definitely share that around if, if that's of interest.
I think that's a blockbuster piece of information, if it's accurate. I mean, that's really important.
Doesn't that also touch to um, the impact of complete streets? It's not just necessarily the trail itself, but if you make it a more walkable, bikeable, safer, calmer area, uh, doesn't that generally increase the value of the properties and the businesses?
It, it does. There hasn't been as much detailed data and evaluation for a complete street. They exist. They're certainly out there. But each street is different. And so it's hard to compare streets, um, you know, against each other for the economic impact. But there absolutely is before and after studies after complete street elements have been implemented. That shows the increased value, not only of, you know, increased walking and biking rates, but then that economic value of the properties along the street. So that's an important element that we could potentially add.
Thank you.
Actually, Jennifer, to, to add to that, uh, and back for a moment to the Indianapolis situation there. It's not necessarily complete streets would be the driver, but my suspicion is that they've done more along that uh, uh, the cultural trail than just the trail. And so it's become a uh, 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 you know, an attractive place to be and, and do business and things like that. Um, and these things do work together. Um, and so uh, back to the point about, you know, the, the amount of housing building increases is very compelling. But also, you know, what are the other factors and, and recognize that, you know, certainly with, you know, one line, you know, that you're, you, you can't give too much detail. And yes, we are uh, uh, among the uh, already convinced. I'm not sure how many skeptics you're into. At some point you probably will, um, you know, and if not skeptics, just folks who just have to sort of balance the uh, the needs across, you know, the rest of the county like are obviously the members of the board. But um, to be able to uh, um, show a little bit more, not in this briefing, but as a side, and you said you've got some of the information. You know, sort of where these figures come from and, you know, this is, um, this is true or this is believable. Here, here's how we can actually, uh, you know, make that case. Um, because uh, for those who are, who are believe already, you know, you see it, then the others like, well, really show that to me. And so um, just, just some thoughts about maybe um, having some backup information or, or, or having prepared some uh, uh, information that can, can show what you already, you know, how you came to the conclusion you came to.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And we've been thinking about that as a team in terms of, you know, what I call elevator pitches. So the one pagers that just kind of cites, you know, the data behind it, links to where they can go, you know, for those that want to dive into the actual data and the um, you know, to validate what, what we're saying. So that's definitely something that we're looking towards, you know, as a potential to help promote that message.
Have you worked with the uh, EDA folks about this perhaps? Um, we've been, we've had them actually come to us a couple of times. And one of the things the tack has started to do is look at sort of the economic strategies in various parts of the county. This is not exactly that because, you know, the uh, the trails network is uh, I won't say it's independent, but it's not as private economics as some of the transportation things. I'm just wondering, there, there might be some uh, perspectives that might be helpful, some facts you might be able to get from them. Might be able to help, uh, uh, you know, make an even stronger case, a more connected case for some of the economic development priorities that the county has.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We'll definitely note that down and.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we've been working with the uh, county internal um, economic group, which accesses the, in the executive office. But yeah, it's a, um, we should definitely share with the EDA as well as an external group. Yeah, thank you for that. I just want to point out on, on, on the, on the slide, uh, the trail oriented development, the Indianapolis trail. Uh, the county is planning for similar trail in Tyson's, which is a really exciting opportunity. Not necessarily from a economic development standpoint, because Tyson's has much different drivers, but as an amenity for Tyson's that could bring people to Tyson's just for the trail, uh, to, to experience Tyson's using that blue trail.
Great. So if there are no more questions on the benefits, um, we did want to share some of our findings from our existing conditions analysis. Um, and you know, this is a map that just shows we pulled the census data of the existing walk to work rates. Um, and so, you know, based on the data, we have one point five percent are the rate of people currently walking to work. And this is just those commute trips, commute to work trips that are identified through the census data collection. Um, of course, we're all kind of waiting to see what the new numbers are going to say. So, you know, um, this isn't using the, the latest census data. That, that data isn't available yet. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, how much we changed. Um, but what we found by, you can see on this map, the red, you know, around George Mason University is to be expected. The college presence there is really going to drop, you know, um, have the really higher rates. That even though the average county rate is one point five percent, we are seeing much higher rates, you know, in our activity centers. And so like I mentioned, the JMU um, area is seeing over eleven percent walk to work rates. Um, and then some of those orange areas like around Reston and Tyson's are seeing anywhere from five to eleven percent. Um, so while we are looking countywide, so we're being very comprehensive from a county approach. We do recognize that the context of the county, that average is going to be lower. So we're also really focused on looking specifically at those activity centers. Um, because that, you know, the comprehensive plan really promotes, and that's where that coordinated development and those walking and biking trips um, are currently occurring and, and we hope to continue to promote them to occur there.
Well, it's interesting to note, I see some uh, largeish activity centers with very low walk to work rate. So I'm sure you've noticed that too. Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does somebody have a question?
No, I just, Roger, go ahead.
Well, I'm looking down here in my neck of the woods, down there in that little corner where Fairfax County meets the city of Alexandria. Uh, that's the west end of Alexandria, which is undergoing some development, redevelopment, some of it in Fairfax, a lot of it in Alexandria. You have to, are, are you expecting to have residential options within those centers? I think they're already there. Uh, they may not be the most modern, but they're there. It, it seems to me that the residential opportunity and activity opportunity kind of go together and would enhance the walk, not only the walkability area for recreation, but it becomes almost an employment center as well.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, it's, you don't have people there, living there and trying to get into DC, or try to get some. But people who live and work there or work close by. And.
Right. I think you're heading.
Fort Belhor is a big blob there. And I suppose that on the Fort Belhor post, a lot of people walk.
Yeah, for Roger, for those areas you're seeing there at the, at, at the border of Alexandria and Orange, I would guess those are uh, uh, the um, skyline towers area, which of course.
Right.
It is a super high density residential, but also um, um, uh, employment. And then the uh, going down the Beauregard area and all of that surrounds the Mark Center area. So um, it would not surprise me that uh, in the years since Mark Center has opened, that uh, some of the employees of Mark Center have decided to live uh, there. Uh, because that's, you know, there, to me, that uh, those two areas are where you have that mix of residential and employment that you're talking about.
One, I think I can't hold this any longer. And I'm going to put it in that is there is a trail that runs from Columbia Pike to Mark Center. Uh, I've been on it. It's sort of walkable, but you can't ride a bicycle on it because it forward towards two streams, three streams that have pylons in the middle. So if you're somewhat adroit, you can cross those streams. Water's not too high on foot. Wouldn't want to try it on a bicycle. That would seem to me to be just overwhelmingly ripe to complete that trail. Not only that, but it runs along the park lawn development, which is not a whole and very expensive, expensive development of small Virginia type residences that would be ripe for revitalization. It'd be just beautiful if you worked in Mark Center to live there. Uh, you, you could walk to work in Mark Center or if they fixed it so you could, you can ride to work. It's about two miles. That is just sadly overlooked. That's the kind of thing that I'm going to kind of push. And there may be twenty or thirty other situations like that in Fairfax County where you can, we could might be able to get some riders and walkers without spending a whole lot of money. Um, but that, that one is just. But that one is just asking for work. I just hope it doesn't get overlooked. That neighborhood is, I walked that thing to Park Center or jogged it at one time. Don't do it anymore. But yeah, you can do that. I mean, it's possible. I think some people down there would worry if the trail were complete that it might invite interlopers from outside and contribute to crime. But I don't know how big a consideration that is with some of these trails. I think in Arlington, they kind of handle that by, the trails are lighted. We could do that. But then people complain, well, you know, it's on at 1:00 in the morning and it shines in my window. I mean, all kinds of things. But that one is, gee, that's grade A prime. And most of it's there already. And it's a pleasant walk, whether you're going to work or not. Okay.
Is that the Holmes Run Trail you're referring to? The Holmes Run Trail from Columbia Pike down into Alexandria?
Yeah, I think that is the Holmes Run.
Yeah, so we identified that as part of the regional trail network. I don't think it's currently part of it, but it's in the updated network as definitely one of our top opportunities. Thank you for mentioning that, but it's definitely on our radar.
Goodie. That's low-hanging fruit, because the trail's already there. It's just not as usable as it could be, particularly by bike.
I have a question about this map that you may have already covered. I apologize if you did. Are these people who just straight-up walk to work? Or is this a combination of walk and bike, walk and public transit, walk and, I don't know, one of those rent-a-bike things?
Yeah, so this map specifically is just those that identified as having walk-to-work through the census data.
Just walk, any walk, that's.
Right. So I'll show you next, we have the bike-to-work rates. And then we could have, and we have pulled the transit-to-work rates to kind of show where the hotspots from a transit perspective for those that identify taking the bus to work.
Yeah, what Linda, I think is kind of hinting towards is how significantly undercounted pedestrian trips are in the county that are going to work, because the transit times are longer than the walking times often. So the way the census works is it asks which mode did you spend most time on? So if you walk 10 minutes, it take a 30-minute metro ride, you will need to check transit, and that walk trip is not counted. So it's not the best data to use, but we also have.
Thank you for the clarification. You were like reading my mind. Thank you.
So we do have some other data that we haven't presented here today, but we're actually looking at big data from cell phones that give us a bit more of an insight into actual walking rates and biking rates. With caveats as well, it's not perfect data, but it's better than the census data. But overlooking at both of them actually gives us a really interesting picture of where people walk in the county for transportation purposes particularly.
Nicole, a couple of things there. You may have to repeat what you just told. Linda, did I hear you right that if your walk-to-work takes less time than a bus trip, the census only takes, records the longer time and not the shorter time?
Correct. It asks you to only mention the mode, which would be transit or bus in this case, that you spend more time on. So if it would be a 40-minute walk to a 10-minute bus ride, you would check that you walk to work. If you walk 10 minutes to a bus stop and then spend 15 minutes on a bus, you would just record it as a bus ride, and it would not count the pedestrian trip.
Well, I mean, do you pick one? I mean, definitely if it's a 40-minute walk and a 10-minute, I guess it could depend on the weather. But I mean, I don't know, if you alternate between both, what? Just wondering how accurate this statistic is.
It's not accurate at all. I think it asks for a specific day. Like on this day and time, how did you get to work? And you could have walked every single day apart from that day, and you were supposed to record whatever walk you took that day. Is that right, Jennifer?
Yes.
I think that's my understanding, yeah. So it's not great data at all, but until recently, it was the only data we had that was comparable among jurisdictions and areas. So now we have big data as well, but it's a pretty new data source that we have access to, and it's giving us different insights, and particularly also counting recreational trips as well.
I'm sure you'll straighten out the Commerce Department in 2030. One other quick thing, for JMU and say George Mason, are you basically talking to professors and the maintenance staff that keep the university running? We're not counting students. Would it just be those two?
It does count students. So the census data is a sample, so that could be pulling, you know, it's hard to know, and it takes it by the census block. So like Nicole said, the accuracy, you know, we're not that confident in the accuracy, but it is the best data source that we have that just kind of shows the overall walking rates. And it's how most cities and local jurisdictions are using this data to compare and track and evaluate their programs. I think the shift, like Nicole mentioned, is using big data, but also just having a user count program and really incorporating that within the technology like we do for vehicular counts and ADP counts. So it's just kind of closing that data gap. But that is a significant issue that everyone is facing across the country in terms of how can we accurately count and measure use? And right now, the ACS and the census data is the best data source that we have.
Okay, yeah, it just seems like for the university campuses there, that's kind of gaming the system a little bit. But I mean, do you show the same thing at the high schools? Robinson, Lake Braddock, would that show up as well? Well, even now, because you don't have dorms there now, so I take that back. So, okay.
And I keep hearing the students that walk on campus from the student ghetto, which is usually right off the campus, but they're still students.
And they still work in the area.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Thank you.
And I wanted to circle back to sort of to one of the points that I think Kevin was making, and I heard Jennifer say, we definitely don't want to lose sight of that transit data, and we should use that transit data, because of course, you definitely walk to transit. So even though you're recording your trip in this limited accuracy data model that the census gives us, we should absolutely focus on areas that have the higher transit use, because we know that they walk to get to that transit. No one magically shows up at a bus stop.
No transporter devices, sorry. Go ahead.
We did, this is just showing the bike-to-work rates. And so we have nowhere but up to go. So based on that census data, it's 0.3% is the average rate across the county of biking to work. But there are higher rates that exist. And I think opposite of what we kind of just saw with the walking rates, some of those higher rates are occurring outside of the activity centers. You can see some of those red, that one red, and then some of the orange and yellow. I would say that our confidence is even less on the bike-to-work rates, because it's such a limited data set. And so the accuracy gets a little bit farther off. So there's not as much bike-to-work activity happening within the Fairfax County. A lot of the biking is recreational-based, you know, across the county is what we saw. And then when, as Nicole mentioned, when we compare and overlay this to some of the big data findings, it did start to match up, but it just showed some other hotspots across the county based on cellphone use.
Jennifer, this is Kelly Westonhoff. How does it capture those who bike to work? For instance, around Reston Town Center, a lot of those who bike to work are people who tend to not fill out census forms? I mean, how does it capture the day laborers and the folks who strap their bicycles to the trees at 7-Eleven and Herndon, that type of thing?
Yeah, I mean, again, that kind of goes back to the accuracy of the data. It's only as good as those that take the survey. And we know, just from our work and what we have learned, there is an equity component on who takes the census data. So I do think it's missing that element. And I will just say too, this is now outdated data. So we're looking at old DCS data. And so with the new data that comes out, and it's a different census data set, so we'll see what the results show. But the great thing about using the census data is it just provides a benchmark. So it's just an evaluation tool that just kind of sets the tone of what we think. Is it higher? Yes. I think we know that the rates are higher across for the county average and also in certain areas of the county. But it does provide us with that benchmark that we can use to measure and improve on.
Well, I'm looking at this brown spot down here, down Bellhaven. And that's the Mount Vernon Trail. I would imagine, and that may be fairly reasonable, because there's probably some people who commute on that trail. I wouldn't be at all surprised. And they probably are commuting, maybe commuting up to the Huntington Metro or environs. I mean, but your data wouldn't necessarily show that they were going from their home to a metro stop.
Correct.
But the BRT that's planned for Route 1 might be able to accomplish, you would get the same thing along that route at some point. Nobody wants to ride along Route 1 now unless they're suicidal. But you could make that a lot friendlier to pedestrians and cycles along that when the BRT finally gets going.
Yeah, and I think your earlier point about you have to live close to where you work is really valid, especially when it comes to biking too. And just nationally, we know in our work across the country, and the current industry practice, people aren't going to bike to work if they don't have a connected network of low stress that gets them from their front door to the place of work. You know, it's very limited, and we know that from a bike connectivity perspective. You know, that is something to focus on for improving within those activity centers where we can connect the residential neighborhoods to those employment centers.
Well, I think there's a fair number of commuters that use the four-mile tunnel in WOD Trail in Arlington. Of course, that's not in its name. But if you go out there at 5:00, there are a lot of derailers out there. And I think those are people that are commuting to and from DC. Of course, that's not going to show up if it's not in Fairfax County or in Falls Church City. There are people out there using them.
Yep.
Maybe Arlington has some data on that, but.
Well, that orange down in the Mount Vernon District, some of those folks, I know them. They commute into Alexandria, they commute all the way into DC, and they go to Fort Belhor. It's mostly because the National Park Service trail over there is nice and wide and easy to ride. And it's only going to get better over the next couple of years. So that orange will probably get bigger. And that's why I was asking about interconnectivity with the Fairfax County Trails, because I don't see a lot of those people really going west from that location, because there's not really good linkage at this point. So in order to get bikers heading across county, we need to get funding and get these trails done. That's, I mean, all these plans are great, but without the funding and building the trails, where am I going to get any place?
That Ford Road down there goes by Bellhaven. I mean, that's just a delightful area.
Yeah, well, once Bellhaven Road, it's the one just south of the Country Club. And then there's another one, a little bit shorter than Bellevue Boulevard, I think it's called. That goes into the shopping center and into the older established neighborhoods. So there's a lot of nice places down there to bike. But like in all biking areas, a lot of issues on safety. And so even that area needs a lot of improvement.
Yes, I think we need to move on a little bit. I did one question, maybe you'll talk about a little bit later, is was there surveys required? I guess on one level, it's obvious, ask them where they'd like to have trails and things like that. But when Pete brings up the point about east-west trails and things like that, what kind of techniques are you using to predict where to build them next? You know, I saw the slide earlier that showed the various, Ross and the ones that weren't complete. Do we feel we have the network designed that we want to build, we just have to build it? Or do we still need to do more design on the network?
That's a great question, and it's a really good segue to the next slide. To kind of answer that, explaining this slide. So another element of our existing condition review is we really wanted to understand where the need for more active transportation was in the county. And so the blue map is really, it's a composite result of using, again, census data. It's the best data set that we have, but identifies the most vulnerable transportation users. And so this is using elements such as income, race, age, access to vehicle. And you can see those darker blue areas is the areas across the county that have the highest need. So those that may be the most vulnerable. So maybe walking and biking is their only form of transportation. Or we know, as an older population, is going to need more accessibility issues. And so this really provides, and we've got these available in district maps, so you can see more detail for each of your districts. And it's kind of scattered, but it is also interesting how they do start to also mirror those activity centers. You know, and then the middle map, the purple map, is showing what we're calling the demand analysis. And I like to think of this analysis as the live, work, play, transit analysis. So it's basically mapping out where all the residential, the population lives across the county, the higher-density areas. It's mapping out the key destinations such as government centers, parks, trails. It's using the high ridership transit lines and the metro lines. And then this composite map is showing you those dark purple areas are where we expect the highest demand to be occurred for active transportation in the county. This has not taken into account a supply overview. So this doesn't take into account existing network. It's just where we would expect the highest demand. And the importance of these two elements is when you overlay them together, that final map to the right is really showing the areas that have the highest need and the highest demand. So those deep burgundy areas are where some of our most vulnerable transportation users are. And also some of those areas where we expect to have the greatest demand for active transportation across the county. And I will say, there's technical memos that have a lot more of the data behind this, so you can really see the different inputs. But this becomes important when we start to think about overlay, and we think about that funding prioritization and network prioritization. You know, one of the next steps when we think about the network development is to overlay the existing trail network on that third map, and then compare what percent of trails live within the highest need and highest demand. It also helps the county really push forward the one Fairfax goals, you know, looking at equity and really focusing specifically on transportation vulnerability to make sure that we are investing in areas and we're not leaving people behind that may have the highest need across the county.
Jennifer, I would just say, these are very interesting slides. I think very interesting maps here. And yes, this is something you can start to use to decide to overlay your map on and your current transit map and see where things should go. Exactly the kind of thing that we would need. But I will just say though, and I'm looking at the, and I'm using this as an example, and where I'm going with this is suggesting getting a little bit deeper into the data a little bit. Because for instance, I'm from the Drainsville District. I'm looking at the need analysis. I see dark blue up at the very top, which is basically Drainsville District outside the Beltway. And I rarely hear Drainsville District described as underserved. And so, but I see dark blue, and I wonder where that dark blue comes from, which then makes me wonder where the other dark blues come from and stuff like that. I don't want to get into the details of the slide right now, because I know we need to move on. But I think that it'd be, wouldn't mind seeing more later, or certainly would encourage you to dive into these a little bit, to sort of look at those colors, make sure they make sense and things like that. Because if we're going to use this to help advise our supervisors ultimately, obviously, to see that, and to use this to make some trail recommendation decisions, you know, that model is going to be very important. I know we're stating the obvious, but I like what you've got. But I like to just make sure, you know, feel comfortable with the numbers and the diagrams.
Totally. And again, it kind of goes back to what we were talking about. This is pulling census data, the data that we have available. So it does come with its own limitations, but it absolutely is worth kind of like a vetting. And it makes a lot more sense when you see the district map, because you can get a little bit more granular. And then we can also provide a summary in terms of looking specifically area, you know, like that dark blue area, if you really think that that doesn't pass the gut check, we could look and just see, well, that's pulling because it has really high, higher age. And so the age is really pulling, it's maybe an older population, which has its own unique vulnerability needs. And so it's just understanding what the dark blue means, you know, in terms of equity. And we are looking at equity in multiple facets. It's not just income. It's not each unique element. It's a composite of everything together.
Yeah, okay.
No, that actually makes a lot of sense because I, I live in the Clifton-Senerville area. And I was wondering the same thing about some of the blues down in this area. And in, in my neck of the woods, we really don't have much of a public transit infrastructure at all. But we do have a lot of people who are aging in their homes, who are not going to be able to drive any longer.
Yep. And so I, I should say, we can share, and I know it's getting too in the weeds, but so for, this is the composite for each individual indicator. Like we have its own heat map just for age. So you can see just looking at age, where those hotspots, where our oldest populations are. And we do look not only at sixty-five plus, but eighteen and under, because we also know that our children are our most vulnerable users. And so where are the highest concentrations of our youngest populations across the county? And so I think those maps, you know, at the district level could be really fascinating and interesting. And, you know, we can definitely circle back and share those. Because you're right, you know, if, if we were to use this as a prioritization factor, which is a phase two element, we want to make sure that we're all feeling confident in the data sources that we have.
And in fact, that's a good point, could very quickly, as you talked about the phase two element. I think it'd be helpful when you talk to the board supervisors about this is what phase two will help you do. Because I, we, we noted that it's not currently funded. Hopefully you're going to tantalize them with the kinds of information you're trying to get. But sorry, you've got to pay, you've got to pay more to get more. You know, I'm joking the way I'm saying it, but, but I do think though, is it really ties that together? Because you, we really do need to dive in this more deeply to feel confident that we know where we put the trails and where we put our priorities and things like that, language of resources.
Are these maps available on, on the Fairfax County website? Because I'd like to look at, at the, those maps for Mason District if I could find them.
We can share them via email, they're not public yet. So they're not, as you can see, fully vetted, so they're, they're a draft map. But we can share them with the committee if you want to take a look.
I think I would like very much to take a look at those. Looking at it at, at the very local level, maybe some of the other commissioners would do. Because we live there and we know what's there. And might be able to sharpen it up a little bit or say, oh yeah, that's, that's pretty accurate. That's one of the places where we might be able to make a contribution.
And as part of that to have sort of the description, the deeper description, and I, I see there's some, the language, the writings are a little too small, but I'm sure there's a little more than that even, that describes what these blues and purples are and stuff like that. So we can really start to immerse ourselves, so to speak, in these. And as Roger says, you know, look and see if it makes sense from our experience in the, in our districts.
Definitely, yep. It provides an overview of each indicator and then you can see the results of each indicator as well as the composite. So we can work to provide that information as a follow-up. But I think as a whole, like from an existing condition perspective, we've been trying to just, you know, as a consultant team, as, and as a project team, just get a really good understanding for what our strengths and weaknesses are from the existing network. And the other piece of that existing conditions is really the, the deep dive into the public comments. Because, you know, we can do all the data analysis, you know, we want, but really hearing from those that live and, and breathe and, you know, use the system the most and really identify the key themes that they're sharing with us. And also we're having a very targeted approach to evaluating the public feedback. We want to make sure we're hearing from a diverse audience and that we're reflective of the existing demographics across the county. So we'll be doing some cross-analysis based on, you know, demographics such as the languages that they're providing within the survey or race, income to try and see if there's any key takeaways from that perspective as well. So without further ado, we did want to dive into, so all of that, you know, really fed into the development of a draft vision statement, goals and objectives. And this is in, you know, I'll just make another reminder that this is still just draft form. So we're really excited to get your feedback so that we can incorporate that. And then we're also, we'll be incorporating the public feedback to make sure there wasn't, you know, anything else that would adjust the vision statement and the specific objectives to address the, the, the comments that we received. And so our draft vision statement for Active Fairfax right now states that Fairfax County streets, sidewalks and trails are places where people of diverse races, cultures, incomes and ages feel comfortable walking, biking or using other forms of active transportation to safely access the widest range of destinations. And so we went through a couple of versions of that vision statement. You know, it's always a fine line towards myth of what is really simple, so the average person can understand. But we also want to make it, you know, all encompassing to make sure we're really hitting on the different elements of what we want to focus. So definitely want your feedback there. And then we've identified four specific goals for the plan. So one would be looking at access, safety, livability and equity.
Jennifer, are electronic scooters, things like that considered a, a form of active transportation?
Yeah. So that's what we, you know, it's hard to list every mobility device. And so it's walking, biking or using other forms of active transportation. Because who knows, maybe there'll be electric rollerblades in the future, that's a big hit. So we're trying to keep that a little bit flexible within the vision statement.
It, it might be helpful to define active transportation.
Thank, thank you, that's right.
Yeah.
Because reading this, I go, okay, this is good, but other forms of active transportation, what's that? I mean, I, I know we've been talking in and I have a grasp of it, but if I read this for the first time, I'd be going, what is it?
And let me jump in real quick and the commissioners should be aware that, first of all, you made the point that we added a slide, so we're going to provide you with the updated slide. Excuse me, updated presentation. But also, you know, you don't have to give us your feedback tonight. You're going to get this, we want this to, I mean, you, you are giving us your feedback tonight. The deadline is not close the business tonight. So, you know, you'll be able to have this, give this some thought, you know, these are, these are very important to us. And so like, like Jennifer said, you know, there's already been a lot of wordsmithing. But as you absorb all of this, you know, please take, go home, go to sleep, then, or you're, you're, you're home already. Go to sleep, sleep on it and, and give us some feedback here over the next few days and weeks. And, and that's exactly what we're looking for. Thank you.
Absolutely, but I will say that, you know, this is a, there's a number of commissioners, we all care about, you know, biking and trail, bikes and trails. A number of commissioners are particularly interested in bikes and trails. And so this is an opportunity to have a conversation. So I'm, I'm kind of letting the conversation go a little more deeply. It's a work session, it's particularly a detailed topic. And I also recognize that it's easy to talk about things sometimes and to write them down. So this is probably the best you're going to get, we will write some things up. And when we're done here, I will ask what kinds of support you'd like and we'll certainly take that into consideration. We'll put some stuff together there. But I, but I'm letting the conversation go because I think that, you know, that's probably the best way to get the best information from us. Because I know as I'm listening, as we commissioners listen to each other, it spurs other thoughts. So, you know, we have to come here, so that's why we're taking so long, it's your fault.
No, I know, this is exactly what we want. And I'm not, I'm not at all trying to, to stifle, to stifle that. I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners know that it, you know, you'll have, you know, some time to come up with some additional input if you need to.
Well, once Roger's looked at the maps, I'm sure he'll have more thoughts for you, so yes.
Well, one of the things I've thought about and how you deal, when this finally gets to the boy to supervisor. They're elected politicians. Which means they face the voters. Have you anticipated any resistance? In other words, here we've got this better mousetrap and you're going to have some people in some of these areas, particularly my neighborhoods, which are very happy with the old mousetrap. And are likely to resist. I know one of the things they had a few years ago, they wanted to put a sidewalk up Sleepy Hollow Road. And they, they ran into some resistance from the residents in that area. They didn't want a sidewalk on Sleepy Hollow Road. And there are some areas in, in my neighborhood, and it's divided. I mean, if you ask people, you want a Clarendon, I seven corners, some people go, oh yeah, that's great. And they'll say, no way, Jose. I mean, it, it's not, there's not consensus out there. The people along Dearborn Drive, they don't have any streetlights, they don't have any sidewalks and we like it that way, thank you. Now, that's a flood plain and I wouldn't live there if you gave me a free house, but I'm not going to tell them that because they're my neighbors. But you're going to probably run into some of this, and Holmes Run Road is a classic example. That stretch highway is straight, it runs from South Street to Sleepy Hollow Road. And if you're not in a car, you're not going to get any place. Can you put a bicycle lane out there? Is there no on-street parking on there? It, it's not safe to walk or jog, it's just not. And it's not well lighted at night. Or Kern's Road. That's the same setup and you're going to have to change some of these things that were conceived back in nineteen fifty and bring them into the twenty-first century and they're boy, you got a big job. Again, I think it's a good idea, but you know, not everybody's going to agree with me either.
I think that's a great point because, you know, I certainly didn't mean to allude those twelve hundred plus comments just in the survey alone. Not all of them are supportive. We certainly have heard the resistance and that, some of that thought process for deep diving into the potential benefits to kind of help provide that overview of, you know, what's the potential benefits to the county to invest more in active transportation. But it's ultimately not a one-size-fits-all. You know, the, the county is such a diverse context, there's, there's many, many different types of streets. And so again, focusing on phase two and we get into the nitty-gritty of the network. That's why the, the development of these typologies of what streets could look like and when to use them in the facility toolbox. I think that'll be the really critical element to address some of those concerns. Because we're certainly not approaching this that every street, you know, can either fit or needs and warrants, you know, a bike lane. And perhaps there's flexible design solutions that not every street needs a sidewalk either, depending on the speed and ADT. But, you know, I think again, that that's, from the other perspective, is that safety program plan? We also realize that, you know, people are losing their lives, walking and biking in Fairfax County. And we want to be really deliberate to address the safety, you know, needs across the county. And it starts with this vision statement and goals. And so for each of these four goals, there's a series of objectives. Which, if there's no other comments or questions about the vision statement, I can go over and highlight, you know, the objectives for each of these goals.
Yes, please, please do, yes.
Perfect. And so, you know, when we think about access, it's really thinking about, you know, who has access to active transportation? You know, how do we get more connectivity? And a large, you know, another big element that, you know, from the direction from FC DOT, we also wanted to be realistic with this plan because I think the point was just made, there's a lot of work ahead of us, you know, in the county. Everyone knows that, we recognize that. And so we didn't want to have twenty objectives under each goal. We wanted to be really focused and have, you know, a five-year plan kind of approach to the, the goals and objectives. So specifically under access, we've got, we want to increase our active transportation mode share and reduce our reliance on automobile trips. We want to provide a network of comfortable streets, sidewalks and trails that link neighborhoods to transit, activity centers, shopping, recreation, entertainment and public facilities. Provide active transportation amenities such as trail lighting, benches at transit stops. You know, all of the other elements that go into promoting more walking and biking and taking transit. And then we also want to monitor new trends and technologies, you know, such as scooters or new mobility, autonomous vehicles and update our design standards and standards to encourage their use. So that last objective is really just trying to make sure we're thinking forward and we're identifying, you know, potentials. Our, you know, nationally, our transportation system, you know, is changing drastically and is expected to change drastically over the next, you know, decade. You know, so we just want to make sure that, that our objectives can be responsive to that.
Well, one of the problems, one of the real nubs of this in older neighborhoods is they were, they were built on the supposition that we were all going to drive every plane. You know, nineteen fifty-five, you know, you're, you're going to get into a Studebaker Hawk and you're just going to drive every plane. Well, we're not going to do that anymore. But there's some people who still think they can. They're going to try to do that. So at root, you've got to make the activity center, like say seven corners, less convenient for automobiles and more convenient for alternative transportation. And the people that still want to drive are going to probably get a little bit annoyed. If you go down to Clarendon, can you get there from here? Yep. Is it convenient? Nope. Because they really don't want you driving down there. So that's where we're going to go. I think we probably ought to do that. That's my humble opinion, it's going to make me very unpopular. But, and the journey of a thousand miles begins with one step. But that's what you're going to do, you're going to have to make it less convenient for automobiles. And I'm thinking of the Seven Corner Shopping Center. That is a lot of real estate. And probably fifty percent of it is parking lots. Now, I don't know what, and it's owned by BF Saul. I don't know if you can get somebody like that on board with this. I think he probably could, if you could convince him that there's a way he could make more money off that land than paving parking lots. I mean,
Yeah.
Go for that, you know, let, let's build some condos there. Let's have a circulator bus there, let's do this, it's dense. And get rid, get rid of so much parking. Then you do that and the guy that lives down on Sleepy God, you know, I can't just drive up there and park my car. I'm going to be driving around trying to find a place to park. If you take it, that's, I've harped on this, Mike's getting sick of it. You know, because I harp on this parking, 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 parking. But, you know, if you can't get there from here, you're going to have to find some way to do it.
Those were all really good comments. And I think that feeds into that first bullet of reduce the reliance on automobile trips. And there's a lot of different strategies in order to do that. I think I should have taken a step back and just kind of remind us all about the framework of this recommendation. So we have the, the vision statement is that umbrella broad, you know, vision of what we want walking and biking and active transportation in Fairfax County to be. And then we have goals that will be supported by specific performance measures to help us evaluate our progress towards those goals. So again, you know, not to harp on the data, you know, element, but we also want to make sure that these recommendations and objectives can be supported by evaluation. So that they're not just out there kind of floating on their own, there's actually measurable ways that the county can, you know, evaluate progress. And then within these four objectives, there could be a series of ten strategies to achieve the first objective. Ultimately, potentially like an infinite number of action items or strategies. And that's intentional, we wanted to keep the, the objectives fairly broad, not try and get too detailed in the weeds to limit us in the tools that we can use. But, you know, that kind of framework, you know, I, I think will help you as you review these, you know, after the meeting or think about your thoughts as we go through them. Because we do want to check in, are they too broad? Do we think we need to be more specific to get at some of those issues that Roger was speaking of? But, you know, our thought process is how they all feed together, that was, that was the intent of, of the recommendation.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So moving on to our next goal, which is safety. And so you can see that, you know, there's five specific objectives. I do want to just mention again, you'll see the safety, the systematic safety program plan, which goes into a lot more details and really starts to develop those specific action items that support each of these objectives. So just know that this isn't, you know, our only work on safety, of course, within this effort. But we wanted to identify the collaboration that's needed between all of the various partners. You know, that's federal, state, regional, local and private partners. Everyone has a piece and a role in making Fairfax County safety safer for walking and biking. And so that coordination element, probably specifically with VDA is really critical to, in order to help us reduce bicycle impulsion fatalities and severe injuries. Another objective is to implement safety countermeasures along those high injury corridors that have been identified. And really prioritize user comfort. So not only will we prioritize those safety countermeasures using our safety data and analysis, but thinking not only of the crash data and the safety, but comfort. You know, you can add a striped crosswalk, but it doesn't mean it's going to be comfortable for people if it's crossing ten lanes, lanes of traffic. So when you start to think about, you know, pedestrian comfort and bicyclist comfort, that creates a different countermeasure potential. And we, we think that that's an important element to prioritize. Again, working specifically with VDA to incorporate safer designs into state roads. Implementing a bicycle and pedestrian safety education campaign for our public school system as well as the, the public at large. And then ensuring pedestrian bicycle access, safety and comfort throughout all phases of development. So that as the roadway network, you know, starts to change and the development So that as the roadway network, you know, starts to change and the development pressures that are happening across the county, that safety is really incorporated in the design and approach of future development. Any questions or concerns about these objectives?
I just want, quick one there. You know, the word comfort, I don't know to me, but like heated seats and cup holders. So I might want to just look at that word, I don't know what, no other synonyms come to mind at the moment, but I'll just throw that out there.
Appreciate it, you know, we have a lot of discussions at ALSA about that and what word best represents, and it means something to everybody, but you know, whether a facility or an experience is safe is very subjective. And so trying to think about comfortable, you know, that has a different element, but definitely appreciate that feedback, that's exactly what we're looking for.
Well, thank you. Getting in a post-pandemic world, there's probably going to be a lot more e-commerce. It's probably taken quite a jump during this pandemic period. Then it was, I mean, it was already on the roll, but now it's really gonna roll. That's one thing that will reduce automobile trips. And we've got, I got some complaints down here from the neighbors already. Wow, we got all these delivery trucks going through here, you know, it's, you know. Well, it's better to have a FedEx truck who's gonna drop off six packages than somebody taking their Euro Japanese Luxo Cruiser up to Seventh Corner to go to Home Depot. But that isn't the way we think.
And yes, Roger, no, they have to park there.
What?
Jennifer, this is Kelly Westenhoff. I would just maybe perhaps add implement a pedestrian bicycle safety education campaign for the public schools to also extend that to the county recreation centers. Maybe incorporate, you know, parks and rec, that type of thing, don't limit it to the schools is my point, because there's a lot of kids in Fairfax County that are not in public school.
Yeah. That's a great comment, and I caught myself as I was reading it, I said to myself, oh, maybe we shouldn't be still limiting the public schools, so I really appreciate that comment. That's something that we can go back and adjust.
Actually, if I could add another comment in this area, and I'm actually channeling a conversation that started a couple meetings ago. Commissioner Westenhoff was talking about safety in the time when a kid was got rolled over by a car, fortunately he survived. But the education of drivers about bike and bike safety and things like that. That's something we touched upon in that meeting, and that might be another target audience to make sure they're aware. I think of your four factors, your safety is the strongest and clearest, because that's the most direction, connection, and it's very tangible. And so, you know, including drivers and things like that is another way to perhaps make that even more real.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Well, you have to educate a lot of people. One of the problems we have down here is we have and we have a lot of foreign-born people down here, and they ride their bicycles, and that's nice, but they are not and I know Penny's done this, she's tried to, look, if you're gonna go out and ride at night, you have to be dressed accordingly. And there have been a number of times that I have come close to clapping the pedestrian because I just didn't see it. They're dressed in black. And red doesn't cut it. And they sometimes fight across in the middle of the street, I'm not gonna run into you if I see you, but if I don't see you, you know, good luck. And getting people to change the way they dress, particularly if they're out after dark.
On the same safety, frankly, a lot of the people that walk and bicycle themselves need to be trained because they're in the wrong place on the road, they're going the wrong direction in traffic. It's so this, who gets trained in this implementation of a pedestrian bicycle safety education campaign should be everything from the user to everybody that bumps into them or may bump into them.
Great, yep, that's really good feedback.
Thank you.
And we also add on the, back to kind of an access and safety issue, but you know, that we think even closer to home than connecting and connecting neighborhoods, I mean, and we want to get people from their home outside of their neighborhoods, and you know, I wouldn't, you know, certain times I wouldn't let my daughter ride her bike inside of our neighborhood, because it's not, it's not safe, we don't have sidewalks, cars do go fast. And so I hope that we can think, you know, a little broader than just more closer to home than just in connecting neighborhoods.
That's a great point, too.
Well, you have a lot of neighborhoods around here, in our neighborhood and others, that don't have street light. They're dark. Fortunately, in my neighborhood, I have street lights. And I'll tell you, if the lights are out, I report them. And they, it gets fixed, but we have some parts where there are no street light. That is very dangerous to be out after dark, they're walking in the street, and you can't see. And the point I'd say on that is that, said, well, I don't like street light. Okay, you don't like street light, but it, it does fight crime, too. If you have the streets reasonably well lit.
Okay. Appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, thank you. We can definitely look into making sure that the lighting element is represented. So moving on to the equity goal, you know, we have a series of objectives here, and the first is to be really deliberate about applying a racial and social equity lens to our public engagement efforts in the county. And that's anywhere from strategy development, the overall program implementation, to individual project implementation. You know, I think equitable engagement has been a focus, it's an industry focus right now, and there's a lot of new tools. And speaking frankly, you know, it's really worth the investment, it takes time, it takes staff resources and project funding, but it's really critical to make sure that we're, we're hearing from everybody that's impacted by the project or potentially impacted. So that's an objective. Of course, we want to adhere to the goals of one Fairfax policy and make sure, you know, that there's different ways that, you know, the transportation, active transportation plan can help implement the goals of the one Fairfax policy. Prioritize need-based and equitable implementation of bicycle and pedestrian facilities within activity centers. That's kind of getting back to that slide of the equity analysis and really trying to provide a prioritization that's focused on, you know, making sure that we're putting projects in that impact the most vulnerable transportation users across the county. And then also thinking about providing more equity in our funding for active transportation at both the federal, state, and local levels, and so just, you know, we can, phase two, do a deeper dive into existing funding strategies of where we're spending our money, how it matches up with that equity analysis or one Fairfax policy, and, you know, make funding decisions that making, that just ties back to the equity goals that we have as a county. And then finally, we wanted to, you know, analyze and address the likelihood of gentrification due to project implementation. So, you know, a lot of those benefits that we talked about property values, you know, can come with the the challenge of displacement occurring, and so we want to be really deliberate about understanding where the risks lie. What are potential solutions? You know, how can we avoid that displacement or the impacts of gentrification? Just to make sure we're thinking forward and we're really thinking about this from all, from all scales.
Jennifer, on the the equity and funding there, understand sort of covering the waterfront in terms of funding, but do you really mean that the county should be trying to affect federal funding levels? Things like this? I'm not sure, for instance, it's necessary, and I won't go say appropriate, I understand why it's in there. But I don't think this activity here is trying to affect federal funding levels, or is it?
No, so, you know, maybe that needs more clarification, it's not really affecting federal funding levels, but, you know, it is where the federal funds, like, you know, if we go after a CMEC project or different federal funding sources where we're choosing to spend them in the county. So that's at your purview and working with, you know, the MPO and the regional allocations, and so just kind of thinking big picture, how funds are being spent, where those priorizations lie across the county, just making sure that equity is a component. We know just industry-wide that the federal government is moving equity as a very high tier of pretty much all of their funding buckets right now, and it's changing as we see with some of the new funding sources that are available. So it's just making, it's making sure that the county's priorities align with existing federal program.
Okay, so maybe it's equity and funding allocation or something like that, so.
Yeah, to clarify, that's a good idea.
And the other thing I mentioned, I certainly don't want to get into the discussion, but for my likelihood of gentrification, that's a huge issue. I understand wanting to be informed, but I think also need to sort of manage the expectations there, there's little that this effort can do there, I mean, be mindful is one thing. And so just be careful how you talk about that. How much you sort of dive into that, because not surprisingly, that's also a fraught area as well. You know, and could counter one of the things that we noted, the, ooh, increasing property values. Oh, well, you know, maybe not all good, but, so.
Well, this has a a different nexus to it, that is and over here in Comer, where we have a large immigrant population and these low-rise apartments. And most of these people have a lot lower incomes than we do, but and the number of people living in those apartments is some people say it's overcrowding, it's like beauty is the eye of the beholder, but they're paying more per square foot than I am. So, in fact, they're willing to accept higher density and people living on top of each other, they're paying more per square foot. So what keeps me safe? Zonings. I can't divide this lot into four quadruplexes. They can't do it over there on Homer Run Road, they're sitting over there on an acre of land near Seven Corners. You can't do it, you can't touch it. But those people that would, could live there, who would live there in quadruplexism are paying more per square foot of land than those people are.
Roger, I think we're getting a little off topic.
Okay.
You're super good. We're almost done here, it's been a long evening, so let's move on to the next slide, please.
Great, and then so finally, our fourth goal is livability, and that's really getting, you know, increasing the quality of life of residents within Fairfax County and increasing our overall livability for both residents and visitors and users within the county. And so specifically, we want to look at increasing health by providing more access to comfortable streets, sidewalks, trails for both active transportation and recreation, so that's connecting back to our health assessment and really prioritizing the built environment and its influence over health. Integrating the active transportation network and facility needs into all county planning documents and capital improvement projects. So that's just kind of really looking internally and making sure that active transportation is represented within existing policies and programs. And then, you know, funding pops up again, pursue increased funding for comfortable streets, sidewalks, and trails, and creatively leverage different sources of existing funding, which I know the county is already doing, and so it's just important to, you know, keep that at top of mind of how we can be even more creative on how we can really meet the need and the demand of active transportation and the funding need that comes with that. And then finally, increasing flexibility and roadway engineering standards to give more weight to the needs of cyclists and pedestrians by emphasizing user comfort. And, you know, that, you know, incorporates national best practices and innovation and really include placemaking elements, so it's it's kind of taking that complete street approach and making sure that our design standards are living up to that and provides the flexibility, it's like I said before, no street is the same. It's not a cookie cutter, you know, one-size-fits-all, so we really need to build in the flexibility. And, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I work with engineers, and flexibility in design makes them very nervous. But that is a trend, you know, that our firm is definitely working with our clients to improve, and so it's just evaluating our standards to make sure that that flexibility is there. So that user needs and safety and comfort, or whatever word we want to apply to that, is really prioritized over vehicular ADT or travel time and, you know, delay, which is what has historically been used to really prioritize and think about our transportation system.
Yes, please.
We've already talked about the one word, comfort. In this particular case, comfort again just bugs the heck out of me. If you use something like maybe satisfaction or amenities, something like that might make it something that doesn't jump up, it was comfort to me again, is we talk about armchairs and cup holders. So if we could change that word, I would really like it.
It's really meant to be the same thing, so I think you're actually crying onto something with your armchair comfort. This is exactly what we want to talk about, that walking along the road or on a trail should be as comfortable and satisfying and, you know, bringing you the relaxation as being in an armchair and just in an active way. So it's, I think it's exactly that, and that's something that is covered in safety. So something can be safe, but still uncomfortable. So we have looked at enjoyable, that is a step up. But I think the comfort is really, and it maybe that's just not something you have felt before walking along a street, but being from Euro, it's very comfortable and enjoyable and really induces the walking and biking trips if it's a beautiful place that you have no sources of stress. And, you know, it's just something to enjoy, and I think that's what people feel when they are on some of our trails and our parks. They feel very much at ease, and I think that's what we're trying to.
How about welcoming? How about welcoming? Or more prosaically, utility?
Yeah, and I was, I was actually, I was actually thinking enjoyable too, so, you know, this is good input. You know, maybe comfortable and enjoyable to try and to, you know, get this point, get this point across, I mean, but, yeah, comfort is the, comfort is the industry term, and so that's why, that's why we're using it.
I didn't know that, so that's the comfort, that is the industry's term that they use is comfort.
Well, the same thing, there's a, there's a bicycle level of service.
Comfort level, yeah.
Comfort level, exactly.
It used to be a stress level, and then it was changed to a level of comfort. Because that's really what it is, it's supposed to be comfortable in the purest sense of the word.
Okay. I guess my problem is using Fairfax County trails, I have not felt comfortable before, so I was looking for a different word, but if we can find comfort on the trails, all right, I'm in favor.
Okay. Well, after listening to Nicole's description, I'll just throw out, I think she's hit Nirvana when she goes walking there, so that would be my upgrade.
Jeremy, please.
Thanks. I was gonna say, I do like comfortable because it also incorporates that safety issue. We talked about, you know, safety within active Fairfax as like issues where there are pedestrian accidents or other types of accidents, but comfort also is, you know, we have communities that live within a mile from the metro, but they don't feel it's comfortable or safe to walk, and they just don't do it. Because, you know, there's, the sidewalks is near a street, and and so people don't, don't take it, and so I think that needs to be, you know, incorporated to that, the comfort of like being able to get somewhere encourages people to take it.
A good example, for example, sorry, it's a shade tree, if you walk along a safe road, but you're exposed to the heat in the middle of August, having a nice shaded walkway, it's a lot more comfortable, so that comes down to the personal feeling of comfort than, and really many people don't, you know, are actually really discouraged by, you know, they don't want to sweat, or they don't want to be exposed by the sun, you know, when they walk, so there are definitely these enhanced amenities. Or no place to sit down to rest if you want to, you know, just take a little break, those are the little things that make a difference.
Listening and taking it in, and I appreciate it, and I want to feel comfortable on my bike, so I I thank you very much for the education.
Well, actually, I hadn't realized until you mentioned it, that comfortable is a term of art in the industry. Perhaps there's another word that could use a definition. Certainly to explain what you mean by comfortable in the beginning, I won't say I have to put it in quotes because it's a term there, but explain to Uh. I won't say I have to put it in quotes because it's, it's, it's a term there, but, but explain uh to the board what you mean by comfortable to, to sort of paint that picture that they're welcoming streets that people want to walk on, um that they're eager to do it. Um, you know, I'm not sure you put armchair in the, in the definition, but, but that's the painting, the picture you're trying to paint. Um. And so then I think they'll understand and, um, and it introduces them to a term of art that they'll probably see again because you'll use it again. And if everybody's using this phrase, comfortable does mean something now.
Yep. So I, I agree with Mike. I, it now makes sense to me and, and because what Nicole has told me and Jeremy's told me and everybody else has told me. I want to feel comfortable using my bike because I don't feel comfortable right now using my bike on most of the, the roads in Fairfax. Uh. And to feel comfortable would be amazing.
I would agree. I would agree with Mike's comment. If the word is, I, after the explanation, the word is fine, but maybe a glossary or the explanation of uh would be, would be helpful.
Yep.
Agreed, because you know, my thought initially was, well, when I'm walking, I'm comfortable in, you know, comfortable shoes. When I'm riding a bike, I'm comfortable with a comfortable seat and well adjusted bike. So you know, I, I, not to belabor the point, but agreed, the description completely changed the, the connotation of the word comfortable for me.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's great feedback. Sometimes you're so used to hearing these words in our work that, that it's good to get, uh, you know, feedback from someone that hasn't been exposed. I can't believe.
I got on my bike for the first time today in 25 years. So, you know.
In anticipation of this meeting perhaps?
It, well, it, it, lots of, lots of things aligned to have that happen. Uh, I've been meaning to do it for a long time and I finally got it repaired because my bicycle shop that was burned out a year ago is now open again. Um, so it, it took a while and I rode it this afternoon and it felt really good. And, but I didn't feel comfortable. But I'm hoping for the next ride to be comfortable.
Pete, Pete, just remember as, as Mick said, you, you can't get no satisfaction. So that works out.
You know, I mean, we're laughing about the idea of comfort, but but I think it's also important that that ties back into the education element. Um. I, I teach privately and I teach a lot of women who are returning to biking like you are Pete after a, a long time.
Yes.
And most of, most of what I teach are skills for handling the bike so that when they are on the trail or on the road, they're not having to think about that kind of stuff. And that completely changes their level of comfort in any environment they're riding in. So how do we reach those adults who want to return to biking but are terrified because they've been driving these roads for so long? They know that they're probably targets. So just to wrap that in.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a very good, very good point. And I black the education back to what it takes to really have more of a bicycle culture in a place that's been primarily a car culture. So yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Great. Well, just to wrap up our presentation, we just wanted to share, you know, again, that project website. I hope you all are familiar with that by now, but you can find more information there. Um, you know, if you have any questions, you know, follow ups, you can email active fairfax@fairfaxcounty.gov. Um. There's the, you know, the mailing address, which I'm sure you're familiar with, but I think like big picture and Chris and Nicole, I don't know if you have any additional guidance, but you know, I just wanted to mention that May 15th is when we're closing the public engagement. And so any, um, we're really looking to dive into what the public's telling us and make some final tweaks to these draft vision statement and goals. Um. So just keep that date in mind in terms of if you have time to to think about these, marinate on these, you know, we'll definitely pour over this recording and make sure we capture all of the good feedback and discussion that was um presented this evening. But, you know, any additional comments or thoughts? Um. It would be great to get those in by May 15th.
Fantastic. One thing I wanted to ask and uh, and this is really sort of gaining the next steps, but I, I wanted to have this conversation, you know, with you here obviously is what we can do to help. Um, we've certainly given some feedback tonight and encouraged commissioners to uh, I think of other things that uh we might want to suggest for, for consideration. Um, but you're taking this to the board of supervisors, I believe, on, on May 25th. Now, we could, uh, the, the tack could consider uh endorsing the product, uh, perhaps suggesting uh the uh uh urging the, the board to consider proceeding with phase two. Um, you know, we know that's going to be, you know, important as well. Um, I throw this on the table now for you to discuss with us, but also the reason we wanted to have this conversation this evening is that if we wait until our regular meeting on the May 18th, there really will be, would be no chance for us to do anything prior to the 25th. So we will be meeting on the 18th. We can consider uh doing something if we need to. Um. We don't have to have a definitive word right away. We can uh, you know, have a resolution perhaps or something uh put together and set out prior to the uh, to the meeting on the 18th and go and do something like that. So I'll just, uh, you know, sort of uh, uh, ask you now, uh, if there are some things you think in particular um that you think would be helpful. Uh, Tom, you're welcome to speak up too if you'd like. Uh, or some things we can do that to help you uh, uh, support and buttress uh your presentation for supervisors on the 25th.
So Mr. Chairman, I think, I think you're right on track with that is whatever comments um the tack would like to share with the, the board. I thi- I think you've, you've shared quite a, a bit of um input this evening and, and we appreciate that and, and we'll work to incorporate that. Um. I do think that um you know, anything that you would gather in the next two weeks that you could um, you know, kind of synthesize around it at your meeting on the, the 18th would be helpful. Um. And then you could bring that to the um the board transportation committee on the 25th. Um, we do have and, and we are prepared to talk about the um, the second presentation tonight, but I would say that that's probably a good half hour or 45 minute um presentation. And so you may want to consider just um bringing that um back on the 20, uh, on the 18th. And going through that on the 18th and then kind of summarizing your comments that you might want to make to the board of supervisors on the 25th.
Okay. Okay. Um. Yes, I, I definitely think uh now is a little late to uh, to be getting into a whole other presentation. Um, you know, uh, I will encourage in a moment commissioners to uh, uh, you know, particularly um Alexis and Kelly who put together the, the pitch for at our last meeting to see if there's some things in particular that were in that pitch, uh Jeremy as well had some comments that were, that they were incorporated that perhaps are worthy of, um, being incorporated that weren't discussed here. But uh, so I would like to uh, uh, you know, do that in, in just a moment. But uh, so with Tom, yes, I think that uh, um, if you're ready to uh, have the discussion on the uh uh draft systemic safety program on the 18th. In fact, as I'm thinking about it, um, the bulk of the comments were some of the most uh important comments were safe to relate to the mobility threes or construction. That's clearly a safety issue. Um, you know, I think that um there was uh, um and I think that was the uh, you know, the, the, you know, the big one there, so to speak. Um, that I think is, is, is most directly related, you know, there was the issue of, of crashes as well, which is another safety issue. Um, but let me ask uh, the commissioners who particularly were involved in possible topic for active Fairfax. Is there anything that we, we need to add now to make the active Fairfax team aware as they go forward? Or, you know, and/or how about we talk about those things as part of the safety briefing and we will put that on the agenda for the, we can put that in the agenda for the 18th.
At this point, this book should probably go to the 18th.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the safety piece won't be going to the board until June 29th. So you actually have not only May 15th, uh, May 18th, but you also have June 15th.
Okay.
Still be two weeks out from the, the meeting with the board on that.
Okay. Um. Do we run the risk of uh sort of getting ahead of you then? I mean, what I mean is if we discuss the safety activities on the 18th of May with another month, you might, your group would make more progress. It might be more appropriate to talk about it closer to the June meeting then.
I, I think we, we're, we're prepared to talk about the, the presentation that you, you all discussed at your last meeting. We can certainly do that on the 18th and then we probably will have additional materials related to the safety plan, which we may want to bring back to you on June 15th.
Okay, okay, okay.
Or we could do it both on June 15th if that would, if you would prefer to do that.
Well, I think the operative question, uh, and I'm opening up, I'm, I'm, I'm calling up particularly Alexis and Kelly and Jeremy because they had the most substantive comments. We're all involved in the conversation last time, but, but Alexis and Kelly put the brief together and Jeremy had some points to add. Is there anything about the possible topics for the active Fairfax plan you believe we should be addressing now as the, as the group goes to the transportation committee here on the 25th of May?
I think from our presentation, the one topic that isn't safety is the, the question of public private spaces. And because that's, because that's such an important equity issue, that, that might be something that should go now. Um. But as far as waiting um on the others, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Okay.
Now, Mike, I like the idea that you brought up of developing some kind of a, you know, a document of support. I can't think of a good term for it. I, I think that yeah, you know, we've you know, I'm, I'm Googling, trying to see if I can find an example and I'm not finding any good ones right now. But, you know, basically a document saying, you know, we, we've reviewed this, we support it, we think you should move forward with it.
Oh. That's easy to do. Um, we can certainly pull a, a, pull a resolution like that together. Um. What does the, and I'm not asking for a vote, obviously, uh, for the commissioners here, but certainly one of the, but I will actually uh um, and, and Tom, I know that you will not solicit the tack to take an opinion, to provide funding for the board, but um, I think that uh um, that is something that the tack can also do. Uh, to consider urging some support for, you know, the, the second phase of this effort. And I think particularly where that's important is the part we're talking about uh previously with the additional uh work on the need and demand. Um. And also, uh, let me suggest here perhaps, and tell me if I'm wrong, um, additional, uh, perhaps additional details in some of the uh, um where do we go here? Of the uh, uh, of some of the uh, uh, supporting information about the uh housing values and things like that, to be able to really provide a solid uh conceptual intellectual foundation for, for going forward. I think that I, I hear, from what I hear, that's something you're going to do in phase two. We can support, I think, conceivably, and we would bring this to a vote, of course. Um, the, the, the tack would support um doing further work in this area to get to that solid foundation. Any uh, uh I, 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 I think that sounds helpful. Um, you know, uh, Chris, Tom, you think that's something that uh, uh, might be, might be something would be uh welcomed?
Sure. I mean, I mean, part of what we're really looking for is your feedback on what, what's been presented, what might be missing. Um. So yes, um, I think you're, you have a kind of a blank slate in terms of how you want to uh craft your, um, your comments on, on what you've heard or, or maybe what you haven't heard.
Okay. I tell you what, we can, and, and I'm, uh, I'm thinking aloud, which is dangerous, but I do it. Two resolutions, one support for what we've seen, uh, that we believe that the group is on the right track. Another one potentially expressing support to go forward in phase two. Um, we can pass them both or we can pass just one. Uh, depending on, on, on what the tack and how the tack is feeling. Um, any thoughts from, from tech members about this as we put it, as we put it together? You can email me as well, one each, you know, um, but um, I would just like, if there's any comments or observations, I'd welcome them now as we think about how.
Conceptionally, Mike, uh, complete agreement. Uh. I don't see any reason to make it two resolutions though, just one with well, one of the therefore's could be that we support, you know, the, the next phase.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense. And certainly the, the tack can, can adjust and modify any resolution that's presented anyway we, anyway we see fit. Okay.
But the Mike
Yes.
The resolution though is different than the feedback that the team is, is seeking. So
Yeah.
You're, you're wanting us to give you individually the feedback. Right? And then you'll put that together with the resolution?
Um. I'm glad you asked because the answer is no. And what I, what I don't want to do is try and, and, and we will, we will have notes of this meeting, although the notes of this meeting will not be nearly as detailed as our conversation. And so we have been able through the conversation here to provide the active Fairfax team a number of items for them to consider as they uh continue to work on the plan for its presentation. Uh, I mean, the, the comfortable word alone, I think was almost worth the price of admission. That's something I know that they'll be, you know, better prepared to discuss because of this conversation. So that, that was, was valid and we, and we appreciate the chance to contribute. But I'm thinking about for the resolution, it is after we've looked at the, because we've looked at the plan. Uh, and, and because we, if we pass the resolution, concur with the plan um and want to support it, uh, we believe the board supervisors should strongly consider going forward. The resolution is to take a position uh for the, for the board to uh advise them that we think this is something worth, uh, worth continuing. That's kind of my role is to do those sort of things. Um, I mean, theoretically we could, well, sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
Well, I, I guess my question is, the team is asking for our feedback and, and Chris said, you know, we, we've got some time to think about it and sleep on it and review the materials. And, you know, and, and I would like that time to do that.
Okay.
So, so that's part A that I want to send that feedback to whomever it's supposed to go to. But part B is, is, is if, for instance, the commission came up with something that we thought strongly should be included and they said, yeah, I, we don't really want to include that, then we wouldn't be able to do a resolution saying we support it. So I, I just want to make sure the cart doesn't get before the horse.
Okay, no, I, I, I respect that. I respect that. Um. And I think to do that, um, we're already uh gravitating towards having this be a topic on the, uh, May 18th. Um, I, I think that we, we need to do that to be able to take those kinds of actions. And I don't think we should prejudge what the, what the attack might do. So, yes, I, I, I hear you. Um. So with that, then what we need is commissioners who do want to provide additional information. Um. Provide comments within a week that we can then provide that, that, that gives a Fairfax team when are we to, uh, to consider whether to incorporate it? Should we give it to the end of the week? What are, what are commissioners' thoughts? And also Chris, what's your schedule? When would you, you know, like our additional comments by?
Um, so I, I'm sorry, I think um we, we're certainly flexible. So yeah, the, the, the official deadline uh for input is the 15th. Uh, but um, we're uh, uh, we had already penciled in the 18th on our calendars. I think the discussion is correct that uh, that uh, we were focused on the vision and goals tonight and um we would like to have a discussion with, with the commissioners on uh their concerns uh in the document that Calvin had forwarded us. A lot of that does tie into safety and uh whether or not we have our systematic safety plan uh ready to discuss on the 18th or whether that's uh more appropriate uh in the, in your June meeting. Uh, which we, 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 I guess we'll gladly fill up your dance card.
Every meeting is a good act of Fairfax.
Well, it's, it's, it's important to us. I mean, I, I, I joke, but it's important to us and the timing, the timing is correct. And even um, if we're going to the board transportation committee on the 25th with uh this input on the vision and goals, uh that's our side of the uh presentation, but that, to me, there would be time between the 18th and the 25th for the TAC to um submit something, uh, you know, to, to the board. And again, ultimately, we're taking this to the full board. You know, the board transportation committees are, are work sessions in a sense. So ultimately this will all go to the board, you know, approximately in July for uh some sort of formal board um involvement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Feedback on the 18th is, is certainly fine. There's no issue with that.
Okay, um. Well, I think what I'd like to do is be able to uh I think it's helpful to for the tack to consider passing a resolution. Um, presumably we'll support, but I won't assume. Uh, presumably we'll support, but I won't assume. We obviously have to meet on the eighteenth of May. I think it's appropriate to have the air, active Fairfax team be with us as we do that. Perhaps answer any questions that, uh, that may come up to see what we're doing. Um, and so then we could certainly, you know, ask any final questions then, um, you know, have any clarifications. I would like to, I think, please discuss the, uh, uh, you know. Our briefing, the questions from those that loop, uh, on the eighteenth prior to the, uh, you know, the commission, uh, taking the action. Um, certainly don't object to, it probably makes sense to, if you're ready. Have the, uh, uh, safety pitch as well on the eighteenth. Um, recognizing that that's not what's going to be presented on the twenty fifth. And so with that, what I think it would be helpful for Christmas team. If the tack can send our additional comments by, uh, the eleventh. Um, because looking at a calendar here, um, I think it's, it's, it's only fair to allow them some time to, to look at the comments. Um, and that's, that's, that's a week from now. Um, so we would get you whatever comments, uh, written, written, additional written comments or clarifications or further questions, whatever. By the eleventh, um, and then, uh, come the, uh, come the eighteenth. Go over those last questions, you know, you know, give us, uh, you know, respond to the, uh, the last questions there. Um, and then, uh, we don't need to go through the, you know, this, this pitch again. Um, but I think at that point, that's where we would, uh. Uh, put a, uh, table and consider tabling a resolution. Put it, there would be, there'd be a resolution before for the tax, tax consideration. Um, any objections from the tack members for, uh, for that course of action?
Mike, I, I would say that I'm, I'm, I'm building on a resolution, but you know, the, the, the commission thinks that's best, that, you know, that's fine. Um, I'd rather not, um, you know, on the eighteenth, I think we've. Given good input tonight. They, they seem to have accepted the input. I, I just would hope that the whole meeting on the eighteenth doesn't, you know, revisiting things that we've already stated to, tonight and, and, and in previous meetings.
It's point was well taken. Point was well taken. Um, you know, we, uh, and it is not. Let's put it this way, the board of supervisors, uh, the, the border, the, uh, the, uh, the transportation committee. Uh, of the, of the board supervisors, uh, will not turn this down because the tack did not offer support. It's important to know and we can, we can transmit that in, in various ways. Um, but, uh, it is not absolutely essential that we, that we, uh, pass a resolution. I think it'd be nice to, because I think it's, uh, it, uh, we have an opportunity to be part of that, that deliberation. And take advantage of the work we spent this evening, um, to, to let the board supervisors know that we are engaged and paying attention and that we support. Presumably, I know we do in the strategic sense, uh, what, what's going on here. Uh, so I, I would like to consider a resolution because I think it's, it's something that, uh, is appropriate for us. But also as we go forward, um, if commissioners want to do less of that sort of thing, we can do less, if they want to do more, we can consider doing more as, as well. But I also recognize Kevin that the eighteenth is, uh, uh, when we're trying to have the Uber lift and be a conversation. Um, and so, um, you know, I don't want to take, I, I also do not want to take too much time on this on the eighteenth.
Yeah, that would be a real danger there if you have this, we have this up and that starts to, to go on and on and then we. You know, God knows how long we've been trying to get Uber and, and if we, are, are we actually getting them in on the eighteenth? Do we know?
Well, reached out to, uh, Commissioner Skiles, um, he's agreed to, uh, uh, help us bring Uber firm's in. I've, I've asked him to try and help us also. Bring the lift and via folks. I need to kind of, you know, get back with them and ask them about that. Um, I will, uh, uh, put Commissioner Thiel on the spot, uh, a, a little bit here. I've reached out to him and, uh, cause I know, uh, Mr. Herd, uh, he's also interested in these topics. And so just to let him know, but also there, you know, he may have some connections there as well too. So no, we do not have the people lined up yet, although we, I think we're about a third of the way there. I would like to have all three. Uh, rather than do one with Uber and then another one later with the other two, although I'm not versed doing that if that's the way it works out.
Uh, you know, I would too, and if it, we have to move it to June, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I really don't want to cut into that meeting time. I think it's going to be a. A very informative meeting and I, I just don't want to shortchange it.
Okay, okay. Um, well, there's a few things to, 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 to juggle here, um, you know, as we, as we go forward, I guess, because. We could have our next active Fairfax meeting in general. Uh, you know, when we talk about the, uh, the, the safety, the safety plan there, um. You know, I think really, uh, the, the thing. What I, what I don't want to do is try and make a decision now when commissioners not have not had a chance to sort of think about this a little bit and provide additional comments. So, um, and it was never a plan to, uh, uh, try and pass a resolution this evening. Um, but, uh. I guess.
Wait, let me, let me just put Kelly on the spot for a second because she, she. She seems to have a knack for my favorite word, brevity and bringing these things to a closure. So what? Kelly, what, what would be your outright, you know, recommendation here to, 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 you know, uh, do whatever we have to do to. To get this on its way to the, uh, the BTC?
Well, I would like till the end of this week to be able to go through and look at those slides and think about everything I heard tonight. Um, again, um, but I still don't know if I have anything that occurs to me that I write down. I, I still don't know who to send them to.
Well, uh, you send them to, uh, Calvin on it. Um, and what we'll do is collect them up and we'll send them over to Chris.
Okay, because if, if everybody does that who has concern, then we don't really even need to revisit any of this on, on a regular meeting night.
Yeah.
I would like, um, Mike, just that I, I, I don't know whether we need to collect more. I mean, I don't think we need a resolution to. Make recommendations on active Fairfax, but I think it. I, I would like for us to consider at some point, whether it's a resolution or what format it is, that we support. The additional funding for, um, active Fairfax and that we would, you know, at least from my position, would like to see this continue on beyond phase one.
Go to, Jerry, do you think that would be, uh? How important do you believe it would be for us to, uh, consider and potentially pass as such a resolution? Prior to the BTC meeting on May twenty fifth, would you like to do that or, or would you be, think it's okay to wait? What's your thought?
I don't, I don't know why we need, would need to wait unless there's.
Well, no, I hear you, uh, but if we move forward, that means we have to put it on the calendar, which we can do, which we can do. So that's what I was asking.
You, when you mean by putting it on the calendar, it needs to be on the agenda?
Uh, well, if we're, I, I think in a situation like this, uh, um, we, we. If, if we know now or pretty sure now, or we believe we want to pass a resolution, to consider a resolution. Yes, I think we can, we can put that on the agenda. Certainly the topic would be on the agenda. Um, you know, active Fairfax. I don't think it's appropriate to not put it on the agenda and then like during chairman's remarks or something. Oh, by the way, you know, we talked in our work session about this, you know, here's a resolution. Um, that, that doesn't seem appropriate to me. Um, I don't want to overdo this, um, you know, but, uh, but I think that. Uh, if we want to, uh, consider passing a resolution. In support of what we've just seen and Jeremy, I understand and, and, and actually agree with the idea of supporting funding for phase two. And that would be a, um, a nice message for the, uh. For, uh, the active Fairfax group to take to the board on the twenty fifth. And immediately the, the, uh, the board is not going to make the, the transportation committee is not going to make their decision right on the spot. So, I mean, we could conceivably wait to talk about, uh, phase two. Um, you know, there's a lot of different ways we can do this. I think that's something to have to talk with the eighteenth. Which, you know, uh, is probably not going to be a, uh, it's not going to be essentially too lengthy conversation, but it's, it's not a ten minute conversation. We don't know for sure yet whether we can do Uber V and Lyft on the eighteen today. Um, so I'm going to, I am working to, to, to get that set up. Um, but that is only two weeks from now. Um, and so, uh, if I'm not able to pull that, uh, together quickly, then we are going to have to, to look at you. Uh, because Kevin, I think I heard you say that, uh, you, if you could, you'd prefer to have all three together, not just one.
Yes.
Me too, me too. Um, so, um. I won't defer the Uber V and Lyft because I, I, I can't be sure that June is any better necessarily, even though it gives us more time. Um, but I think that even just the discussion about how I want to handle this resolution, which really tells us how we want to handle all the resolutions. And things like that is, is instructive for us. So let, let's, let, let me ask, I will write this up, um, and we'll distribute it to the, to commissioners. Um, if there's questions about, uh, uh, you know, what I've characterized, somebody disagrees, we can send the comments back to Calvin and I. And we'll get them, you know, get it straightened out. But what I'd like to suggest here is that, uh, uh, commissioners be given until, uh, uh. The evening of, uh, uh, May the eleventh to provide additional comments. Um, the, uh, um. At that point, uh, commissioners will, um, you know, feel, uh, you know, more comfortable with or, or whatever, switch comfort with the, uh, with, with the brief there. And then at the meeting a week later on the eighteenth, uh, we will get the, uh, the questions to the brief that we put together. Um, and, uh, I tell you what, if Uber B and Lyft are coming, that's all we'll do. If they're not, then we can go ahead and talk about the safety plan as well. Um, and make it another, uh, you know, get more in the act of Fairfax and there's a conclusion of those conversations. That's when we'll consider, uh, passing a resolution. What I can do is, uh, uh, put this together, some draft resolutions for the, uh, for the package. Uh, beforehand, so that they're written beforehand, uh, commissioners have a chance to look at them. Uh, and then we'll just discuss them during the, during the meeting. Does that sound okay?
It does to me. Um.
Mike, this is Eric.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just reread your email and I didn't realize that you were looking for. Help. I thought you were just suggesting that I inform the supervisor's office.
So there were sort of two pieces that worked.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I read it fast and my, my bad. So, um, I'll, uh, I'll paint, paint an ox who is the, uh. Transportation person at Supervisor Harity's office. And see if they have any connections with those folks and. I suspect that, uh, a two week turnaround is unlikely, but we'll see what they, what kind of connections, if any, they come back with.
Right, right. And, and it wouldn't hurt to check for all three, just because it doesn't hurt to check for all three.
Yeah, I'll mention, I'll mention that. Yeah.
Okay, appreciate that.
Uber list and, and the other one. Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, well, it went a little longer than we planned. Appreciate folks, uh, folks patience here. Um, are there any other comments about the way that, uh, the way that we got here? Okay, um. I will, I, I look at the agenda, I see that there is an opportunity here for public, uh, public comments. Uh, are there any public members of the public here who wish to provide any comments? Hearing none. Um, we're going to dispense with, uh, chairman's updates or anything else there. Uh. I would now like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Would anybody like to?
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody, uh, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Morse. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Thank you to, for all the presenters tonight.
Yes, thank you. Ten o'clock, we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll be, uh, uh, back in touch soon.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks to the presenters.
Good job. This, this was most useful. This was good.
Yes.
Thank you so much.